Please be seated. So ladies and gentlemen, please note that the meeting will be recorded and live stream. And we are also going, I've got a couple of points to make before our take apologies. The District Licensing Committee annual... Sorry, not hearing.
The District Licensing Committee annual report was separately tabled and that was circulated today and there are copies available for the public. So if we move straight, we have to do a few things before our award. If I move to apologies, I've received apologies from councillor Foster. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Ahopeni Mercer. I now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Those in favour of say aye.
Aye.
Anyone say no? Carried. I have no announcements to make today except, is this where I change the agenda round?
Aye, yes.
Yeah, I will on, I've had a request to take the regulatory items in 4.4 as the first part of general business. So if, unless there's any disagreement, I propose to do that. So I'd now like to call on Jacinta Creft. So Jacinta, would you like to come up here and hear the wonderful words about you and then you can respond?
Good afternoon, everybody. Absolutely Positively Wellingtonian awards are one way the council honours members of our community who make significant contributions to the city. It's my pleasure to present an absolutely positively Wellingtonian award to Jacinta Creft for her outstanding commitment to the wellbeing of vulnerable people in our community. Jacinta has worked tirelessly on the Challenge for Change mentoring programme at the Wellington BGI. This is included work on the parenting programme, training for mentors, home visits with parents amongst many other things. Recently Jacinta took a boy who was eight at the time into her own home when his sole caregiver became ill. She gave the child a warm and loving environment when he had nowhere else to go. And this is just one example of Jacinta going above and beyond the call of duty for the benefit of others. I'm also particularly delighted, and this isn't in the citation, to be recognising somebody who has done such good work to help the younger members of our community when, as councillor Eagle and I have been working towards us becoming a child-friendly city, it's very important to recognise these are going to be our future citizens and as well as it being in their interests, it's in all of our interests that they are good and happy citizens. So I'm proud to declare you an absolutely positively Wellingtonian.
Thank you. And there we are. We'll come this way a bit, otherwise we get stuck behind the line. Thank you. And I'll hold these when you say a word. Thank you. Do I need a microphone? Because I do have quite, I do need a microphone, okay. Is this one on? So first of all, thank you very much, Mayor Wade Brown and city councillors. This is not a position that I feel very comfortable in. I'm actually quite a shy person and receiving awards in public speaking is something that I would generally run a thousand miles from. But I'm, I'm sort of standing here not just for myself but as a representation, representative of first of all the hundreds of mentors who have volunteered on Challenge for Change. We have two down the back, Scarlett and Leila, who, whose generosity and inspiration keeps me going. I'm also here standing for the young people who show so much promise and, and actually putting their hand up to say I want a mentor, show courage. Also for the parents who show such wonderful support for each other and I think a deep humility in being willing to get help so that they can better their families. And I'm also here representing the BGI whanau who support me, the wonderful Donna who's got a heart as big as the ocean, co-facilitate the parenting programme, Ross the boss who is really sorry he's not here, and Rod Baxter who trains the mentors with me and has done for 12 years. And of course my family, my wonderful husband, my daughter, my other daughters, they've been mentors, recruited mentors for me. They've grown up with Challenge for Change, attending events whether they liked it or not and also being willing to let me go for the many weekends and evenings when I wasn't home to cook. So thank you very much, it's an honour, don't feel worthy but in receiving it, I hope that I can continue to take care of the people of Wellington with gratitude and with love. And Elsa fortunately loves to sing, so she's going to just sing a little song for you to finish it off. She probably doesn't need a microphone.
On behalf of my mum. For you, there'll be no crying. For you, the sun will be shining because I feel that when I'm with you, it's alright, I know it's right. And the songbirds keep singing like they know the score. And I love you, I love you, I love you like never before, like never before, like never before.
And you are of course welcome to stay for the full meeting if you like, or you might choose this moment to exit. So I'd now like to call on members present to declare any conflicts of interest they may have in relation to the items on the agenda. We now have one set of minutes to confirm from the meeting held on the 27th of August 2014. Do I have, I move those. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Coblan. Those in favour? Or do we have to vote?
Be fine.
Be fine. Aye. Anyone against? Right, that's carried. Now, there are no late, there is one, no, there's no late items. And I now would like to welcome Mike Mellor into public participation, speaking as an individual on the Victoria Street Transformation Project. He has PowerPoint.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you and thank you councillor Leicester for organising this, for me to make this little presentation. Am I up on the PowerPoint? Yes.
Don't worry, the clock starts at 12.
Right, we're off. I'm presenting in response to the submission process on the Victoria Street Transformation Project. And the first thing I'd like to do is to look at the objectives of the project as laid out in the leaflet produced by the Memorial Park Alliance. And you'll see I've got coloured symbols there. Where there's a council statement, I've put a, what I think it's been achieved or achievable or not. And a green tick, a red question mark or a red cross, I think a fairly self-explanatory. The first objective, providing a premier street, well I don't know what a premier street is and I couldn't see premier street defined, so I don't know whether it achieves that or not. Creating a vibrant inner-city neighbourhood, well certainly the streets planting the trees would make it a nicer place. But if we're increasing efficiency for cars, which is one of the objectives, that means there'll be faster road, more traffic, still a multi-lane highway going through this vibrant inner-city neighbourhood. Improving efficiency for cars, yes, that's because the, there's increasing number of lanes. Buses, it doesn't do anything for buses as far as I can see. Cyclists, I'll come to that in a minute. And pedestrians, yes, there will be some improvements for pedestrians in terms of the enhancement of the environment in terms of getting rid of the slip lane at Vivienne Street and enhancing pedestrian experience. The inner-city parks, yes, that's really great. Why do footpaths? Well, I don't know because they weren't marked on the leaflet, so I don't know where, where they are or where they apply. But just looking to the, the cycle bits, I raised the Island Bay cycleway design issues with the guise at the open day and I'm sorry to say they knew nothing at all about it. And these are quotations taken from the Island Bay Cycleway Consultation, as it currently, which is currently on. It says curbside lanes are considered the safest type of cycle lane. That's not what this proposal is about. It says high-quality cycle facilities must be continuous and this is particularly important at intersections. And these cycle lanes stop well short of the intersections, so confusion and crashes are likely. Also looked at the draft urban growth plan, which talks about the, this area and says it includes open space, yes. Public transport, well there's no improvement for public transport. The buses will still be pulling in and out of bus stops that are too short and blocking the adjacent lane and not letting people get on and off properly because there isn't enough, no parking area around them. Cycling improvements, I don't think so. And city council's role was to encourage and prioritise walking, cycling and public transport over other modes of transport. Well, United is going back, the first thing was improving efficiency for cars, then buses, cyclists and pedestrians. So there is no element of that that I can see not prioritising it. But look, if I can look at how the engagement process worked, you may be aware that the leaflet only came out the week before submissions closed and there was no information on the city website until after submissions closed. There is now. So I don't know how the council is in touch with, with its aspirations with respect for that. Informed by involvement and feedback from Wellingtonians? Well, the only informed Wellingtonians were those who have, were able to go to the open days. And I understand, when I went on the last Friday session, one session to go, there had been about 60 or 70 people through. So we're talking about fewer than 100 informed Wellingtonians. Partner with organisations, perhaps empower Wellingtonians, don't think so. Decision-making processes are accessible to all, I don't think so. In your engagement policy, this is a spectrum of how engagement works, going from informing what, what you're going to do to empowering other people doing it, letting other people do it. And it doesn't fit in anywhere on that because you haven't provided balance and objective information to assist people to understand the issue, which is the most elementary form of engagement. This is the public commitment to how you engage, which is in your document. Listen first and seek to understand. Well, if you're not telling people what you're doing, how can you be doing that? Engage early, giving 10 days for submissions. Seek diverse perspectives, rich diversity of insights from fewer than 100 people. Build commitment and contributions. Contribute, contribute their eyes and views. Wellingtonians, opportunities, there again, that small number of people. Transparency, provide all relevant information. Well, you actually provided none and the information you've got there now is actually differs from the information that I've received by email from the Memorial Park Alliance. For instance, the Memorial Park Alliance say that the third of the cycle lane's now gone. The southern third has disappeared. They say there's a meeting tomorrow for cyclists to do a site visit, but there's nothing about that on your website. There are no clear ways on the diagram, but clear ways are mentioned in, on, in the detail. So it's not at all clear what you're proposing or what you're consulting on. So I'm just made some suggestions which are in my detailed submission on the proposal that I think you need to review this consistency with your other plans because I don't think it is consistent, I've just mentioned a few there. The bus priority plan I mentioned because one of the things that Greater Wellington Regional Council is proposing to do is increase peak hour bus frequency from about 13 buses an hour to up to 22 buses an hour along that. And with your current proposal, every one of those buses will block the cycle lanes. The engagement policy, well I don't think you've been consistent with your engagement policy at all. I think it's a very good engagement policy and it'd be really good if you followed it and it really does need an audit. And I propose some detailed, specific points as to how you could improve the project in relation to the stated objectives. I won't run through those, they're, they're fairly low level. But I think the key issues are the overall proposal and the engagement process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. And we'll do our best to address some of the issues that you've raised.
Thank you.
So we now, and do people have, will this be on the hub?
Yes, we can place it.
Yeah, and we'll put the submission on the hub so that people can refer to it. God, I should be standing. So I'd now like to call on councillor Ahopeni Mercer, who is Chair of the Regulatory Committee, to move to 4.4 in our general business. You could just introduce it because people may not be expecting it yet.
Okay, and I'm hopefully correctly assuming that people have read this and as did the committee. And madam mayor, I'm just checking with you whether it may well be that I have to stand up three times to do this report or we're going to just go through them all in one?
I suggest you take them all in one go and then people can take them separately if they have any desire.
Okay then. Well, all these, all these matters related to the various road stopping disposal and in one case an exchange and over the page again, these went through committee unanimously some weeks ago. And madam chair, I have nothing further to add and I so move.
So this is Karori, Vogal Town and Malum and Karoria again. So do I have a seconder? Councillor Panett, do you wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak? Then I suggest that we vote. Is the machine working? Please vote. I declare the motions carried. Thank you councillor Ahopeni Mercer. We will now move to, I call on councillor Eagle for the first report on the District Licensing Committee activities.
Thank you, your worship. Councillors, I refer you to page seven and I present to you the 2000 and, I think it's 1314 annual report of the Wellington District Licensing Committee for submission to the Alcohol Regulatory and Licensing Authority. So our, our job is to simply approve this report. Can I just quickly start by thanking the list of people there on page 13? We, we appointed the chairs, deputy chairs, the members of the DLC there and then also to acknowledge the secretary and support staff too. A couple of points, page 17, you'll see that in section 1.6 there, that there's some noticeable trends or issues faced by the DLC to date and particularly around special licences and support and training for the DLCs. Just some other things to note, on page 18 and 19 you'll see a mention of our provisional local alcohol policy and there are, there are eight appeals and that process is going through at the moment. And it's finished there on section six with some stats for our information. So I move the report.
And thank you for giving us a summary of it as well, councillor Eagle. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Freed, do you wish to speak to it? Does anyone else wish to speak to it? Then we shall move to the vote. Thank you. I declare that carried. We now move to item 3.2 in our general business, the Wellington Regional Economic Development Agency. And in this case, I'm actually going to call on councillor Coblan, the economic portfolio leader and Chair of Economic Growth and Arts.
Thank you, your worship. Well, it gives me great pleasure to, to talk to this paper today actually, which is obviously seeking agreement to establish READER, the Wellington Regional Economic Development Agency. And there's obviously a need now to move into the various agreements that are required in order for us to do that. At our GFP meeting on the 24th of June earlier this year, we effectively considered and approved in principle a proposal to establish a single regional economic development agency combining economic development, tourism, destination Wellington, venues and major events and activities of WCC and Greater Wellington Regional Council into one entity, READER, which will in fact be owned by the city 80% and the Greater Wellington Regional Council 20%. And by and large, this proposal has had pretty widespread support from a number of key stakeholders, the wider community and in fact the other councils in the region. So the advantages of doing this are that we'll have a clearer focus and one voice in terms of economic development for the region, that would have improved capacity and scale, stronger leadership. And, you know, really the whole thing is about removing duplication, making the boat go faster, I guess, giving us better connections potentially with central government through one single voice and really just streamlining the back office functions. office functions, and it would enable one single point of contact for economic development. So the shareholding percentages will be based on the funding contributions, and directors are going to be appointed jointly, and if there's no agreement, then directors are appointed by each shareholder in proportion to their shareholding. So Wellington City will appoint six out of the eight directors, and the organisation will be governed by a streamlined Wellington Regional Strategy Committee, which will have ten members, with four appointed by Wellington City Council. So essentially, our committee, along with other councils in the region, have supported the proposal in principle, and we undertook the consultation. The consultation was positive, and just to reiterate, there were fifty submissions, thirty-three organisations, out of those fifty submissions, so thirty-three of the submissions were by organisations, and general support across the board. So to date, six out of eight councils have given final approval, and the Greater Wellington Regional Council will meet on the fourth of October, fourteenth of October, sorry, to vote. So I'd ask for your support. I think today as well, we are agreeing to appoint some of the committee members, which is good, and so we'll probably get on to that. Yeah, okay. So I move.
Councillor, if you're moving one to thirteen, we'll deal with that, and then we'll take nominations and so forth shortly. I'm happy to second this approach. It aligns the promotion of Wellington for tourists, for students, for people to move here, and for businesses. It brings together the activities of events, venues, tourism and economic development. Basically, we're telling the same fundamental good story about Wellington, that it's a great place to live, there are good jobs here, that it's the arts capital, that there are plenty of sporting and outdoors opportunities, and we might as well tell them to people who might come here and work in our IT sector or teach in our universities, as well as people who might come here for a week or two, or preferably a lot more. While it will be more streamlined, we're not looking at putting less resource in, we're just looking at getting more effect out of it. I look forward to working with the other councils on this. I think it is helpful that while we are the largest shareholder quite clearly, and we do have that up our sleeve if necessary, we take a much more collaborative approach, and remember that some of the attractions of other parts of the region are also important, whether it's the Warrarapa, the Kapiti Coast, the Hap Valley or Porirua. So I'm happy to second that, and then does anyone else wish to debate? Councillor Peck, and then councillor Young.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I am pleased to see this report at the council today, and I support the report and the recommendations in it. And I note, as councillor Coghlan said, there are quite a number of organisations submitted on the proposal, might be useful perhaps in the right of reply if you could indicate some of the considerations from those submissions. But looking at the list through there, there's quite strong engagement around the whole principle, and I'm pleased to see that people were interested enough to express their views. Madam Mayor, I do think it's an important step to take. We're heading into a very interesting period of time, we've got local government reform on the agenda, there's been quite a bunch of news media around that recently, and we also know that it wasn't that long ago that government had a very jaundiced view about local government in Wellington, and the difficulties of working with local government in Wellington. And whatever one thinks of the government, that's not the point. The point is it's a message that should not be lost on us, and these sorts of initiatives, I think, are really, really important if we're serious about gaining the confidence and respect of those on the Hill that we have to deal with on a regular basis. Excuse me. So, Madam Mayor, I'm very happy to support, excuse me, support the report, and I look forward to the council passing it through at stages.
Thank you, councillor Peck. Councillor Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to also say I completely support the creation of READER. I think it's a very good coherent move for the Wellington region. I am just a bit concerned about the positively Wellington venues model, which I see as being rolled into this, because I wonder whether it's really working in the interests of the wider Wellington community, who after all elected us, and whether this would be a good time to review the model, its role and the driving forces. I understand it's commercially driven, but I think it has overlooked its community role, and I think this is something which the council should take cognisance of. And I'm thinking about theatrical groups, you know, we pride ourselves on being a creative, innovative part of the country, and these people find it very hard to access those venues, who I gather would rather be empty than have someone not paying the full commercial or slightly subsidised rate. Anyway, from various examples which I've got, which I won't go into now because of sensitivities, I just don't believe this model is working for the council. I think that the positively Wellington venues tail is wagging the city council's dog.
Maybe quotable, but I think it does possibly border on, it's getting a little close to the mark. Councillor Ahopeni Mercer.
I also support this, and it's long, a mechanism like this, Your Worship, is long overdue, notwithstanding determinations to be made by the Local Government Commission in terms of, if you like, amalgamating governance entities to create better outcomes. On the way to that, this is a mechanism to get the ball rolling, and it's well overdue. I note on page thirteen here, under the A to F points here, the one voice dimension, having a greater, having a single expert agency, and I'm not going to read it all out, but it speaks for itself there, the clearer strategic focus, and there is not a clear strategic focus at this point. And in terms of access to new funding sources to be available for projects with the potential to unlock the region's economic potential, Your Worship, I think it's pretty crucial that, and I'm optimistic this is going to go through this afternoon, it's crucial that we put our shoulders to the wheel inside this structure in terms of the, some of the big ideas and the big projects that had been flagged at meetings, have been discussed round this table, more discussion to be had, but we flagged them, and we need to make sure, particularly as the singularly greatest contributor to these things, that we make sure that we hold our end up firmly, strongly and transparently in terms of what we see as some of these projects that need to be unlocked, and I'm sure we will convince our partners to be supportive. Thank you.
I just wondered if as arts portfolio you were going to address the other matter raised by councillor Young. Sorry, I thought you were, I beg your pardon, but...
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I will, I do have some empathy, significant empathy for the matters raised by councillor Young, and you know that, Your Worship, because you and I have discussed that, and I have with some of the councillors, and simply, I'm not about to attach any blame to the venues organisation, not at all. There seems to be more than some discontent from sections of our arts community that they have issue accessing venues because of cost. Now, I think it's an opportune time to determine the, how accurate that is, and if there's a feeling round the table that we need to alter our instructions, if I can use that word, then we need to consider that, but I think it's time to, it's more than time to review this. At this stage, I don't want to take any sides on various organisations, I have anecdotal evidence, people come to me regularly, they come to councillor Young, they come to others round this table. See Simon, councillor Wolf nodding here. Now, it's anecdotal, we need to actually get a clear handle on this and absolutely find out how much of a problem this is, Your Worship, and I urge through yourself, Madam Chair, that we discuss with our officers and amongst ourselves how to determine the way forward in this matter.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Eagle, followed by councillor Wolf.
Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly, I will be supporting this. I do applaud the city for taking a lead role on looking at a new structure that's going to deliver economic growth or better growth for the city and region. Just a couple of reminders to my colleagues that when the Auckland Council set up the Auckland Tourism Events and Economic Development Company, with that went significant funding, so we mustn't be under the illusion that just because this is structurally sound, that therefore everything will be fine. Then putting eighteen point three million dollars into that company's books enabled them to really power up their events. We are the events capital, and so we will need to consider this during our long-term planning process, both at major events and with the breakup of community events, there will be some issues there also. The concern raised about the community nature of the venues company was on the board, and there has certainly been some voicing of those concerns, but my concern is slightly different in that the concern sits as being, is the organisation going to be a neutral broker? So when events come to the city, they are shared amongst venues other than those that are managed by the company itself, so we need to be aware of that also. A tick for getting the elected member governance right in terms of having a committee, independent board, councillors will know I'm less enthused, but it's good to see that we have a joint regional elected member committee where decisions that are transparent and accountable, and the people who have elected us feel some control over that is in place, so well done. And to finish off, I mean, the assets of this company still sit with the city, it's like our water company, and so I'm happy with that also, it gives us some reassurance that we have some control on that aspect of the operation, and I wish the new entity all the success it deserves.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Wolf.
Your Worship, I have had the pleasure and honour of sitting on the venues board and also the tourism board for the last nine months. I am definitely for the establishment of READER, I think that READER is going to become an absolutely powerful and wonderful entity for the region. This might be the last opportunity to offer thanks and gratitude to the boards, the chairs in particular, the CEOs and the staff of the organisations that have represented us pretty well over the last little period, and particularly in relation to the expertise, experience and care for Wellington that they have shown over the last twelve months plus, when there has been a little bit of instability and that there could have been a potentially difficult transition. The loyalty in particular has been so admirable, and I really believe that that needs to be noted. I have total faith that READER will act in the best interests of the region, and I know that in the staff that they have currently and members of the board that may transition through into the new board, that they have the absolute ammunition to do great things for Wellington and the region. Thank you.
And I'm presuming that you are actually moving an amendment that says, note our thanks to the existing boards and staff. I would, I'm interpreting that?
Absolutely.
Am I interpreting it correctly?
Yeah.
No, you can't second it, councillor Coghlan?
Sure.
We could accept it, however? Do I need a second as well? Or can we just accept it? I think we can just accept it. And councillor Wolf, I do acknowledge the very important point you've made, and thank you for making it. So we have got that down as an extra, and we will communicate in that way. Councillor Ritchie.
Just going to be very brief, and I'm going to take the advice of my colleagues on this, but I am going to put a little bit of a spinner in the works, just from the point of risk management and our responsibility to monitor and to monitor financially. So first of all, I just want to pick up the point of community use. Absolutely, I'm sure that my two colleagues, three colleagues will make sure that that happens, but we need to look at that very, very closely and make sure that there is some proportion put aside for community use. Secondly, we can be absolutely sure that we will be subsidising this entity heavily, because we always have, we always will, and we will have responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of the venues. That is a significant responsibility. And we will be a minority, there is a single economic entity, but there is another entity, the WRSC, the Wellington Regional Strategy Committee, on which we will only have four members. I am a little bit concerned about that. We will absolutely be providing probably the significant amount of funding for this economic entity. So we have to be very careful that we have in place sufficient oversight, sufficient strategy, but not only strategy, and also sufficient monitoring. It seems to me that this is actually quite a bureaucratic proposal, and also one that is very much at arm's length, if not at two arms' length. So we have to be very careful. I will take the advice of my colleagues and will support it.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. And now we move back to right of reply, unless there was somebody about to put their hand up?
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. And I would just like to reiterate your comments at the beginning that, you know, we do need to do what we can to promote Wellington, not just as a tourism, but a business investment destination, and is about attracting, retaining tourist students, investment in events to our city. You know, we are doing, we are doing what we can, but we can always do more, and this is a good symbol, actually, and a signal that the city is keen to move on its economic development strategy that we put in place in two thousand and eleven. You know, this is a very, it's a great start, and ideally it'll enable us as a region to leverage a lot more from our combined budgets, and I think that's going to be quite a game changer in terms of our promotional activity. In terms of concerns or critiques really, or major themes raised by the submissions, councillor Peck, you asked about that, critique of the current structure that was raised by the submitters, there were points about the benefits of the new structure, there was commentary on the expertise of board of directors, and obviously that's going to be critical to make sure we've got a good board for READER, that understands sort of emerging new trends in the Wellington economy, and have, you know, the experience to guide the organisation. Council involvement on funding balance, rates, of course, you know, how are we going to pay for it, accountability in terms of independent directors and calls for greater transparency, there were questions around governance structure, and yes, there was concern around the use of the venues as community facilities, and I think, I think now we can have some level of comfort there, because ultimately, you know, READER will have a board of directors who will be overseen actually by a new reconstituted Wellington Regional Strategy Committee, and it will have reporting requirements to that committee, and of course, that committee or the shareholding councils will consider and approve READER's statement of intent and annual report on the recommendation of that committee, so I think we can cover off concerns through that mechanism, and, you know, obviously we'll be monitoring that very closely. I think that's pretty much covered it. I think, you know, the bottom line really is that, you know, Auckland's got ATed, we sort of have a, we don't really have anything that's even remotely comparable, you know, we're still not going to ever be as big as them, but at least this vehicle will enable us to leverage better the funds that we have across the whole region for the benefit of promoting Wellington as a destination for tourism and business investment, so yeah, thank you for your support.
Councillor Coghlan? We will now take the existing one to thirteen, the new fourteen that is a thank you, and then we'll call for nominations. Now, we have got on this glorious committee, we have got the mayor, the deputy mayor and the chair of the Economic Growth and Arts Committee, and there is therefore one vacancy. So do I have any nominations?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Marsh.
Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Hapini Mercer. Do I have any other nominations? Then that's going to, then we will just vote whether we agree with councillor Marsh or not, if we don't have any others. So, vote of confidence in the deputy chair. There's no money comes with it, you can vote if you like. Thank you, and congratulations. Now we have to also have alternates, because we don't want to find that if one of us is away, we reduce our strength. So I now call for nominations for the two alternates. Coglan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate councillor Wolf and councillor Peck.
Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Free. Sorry, I saw you first. Are there any other nominations? And let us give our vote of confidence, or otherwise to those two councillors. So we do expect those alternates to keep up with the papers in case you have to step in at the last minute there. I'd now like to call on councillor Leicester as acting transport and urban development chair to introduce the information paper on Victoria Street Boulevard before he then introduces the capital expenditure review from GFP.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the officers for preparing this report, in particular to Anna Harley, Trudy Whitlow, Anthony Wilson and their respective members of the team. There have been a series of questions from councillors and also stakeholders, internal and external, about the project, and this report seeks to address and provide some responses to those queries. Now, Mayor Wade Brown, with your leave and with the leave of the meeting, I think would be appropriate to give the opportunity to officers to respond to direct queries that councillors may have had and information that will have arisen over the past week and with the leave of the meeting.
Brief summary, and is our, sadly, our submitter is not still here, is he? No. Anyway, we can convey these points to him.
I'll provide a brief summary, and then we'll give the opportunity to officers to respond to direct queries that we have. This is essentially an urban design project and looking at a growth area in part of the city. We've got the Farmers and Deca Building, which we know will be developed for Woutek and Fittiraya by Willis Bond, we've got one hundred and sixty-eight and one hundred and seventy Victoria Street, and one hundred and sixty Victoria Street, which will be developed respectively by Craig Stewart and the Stratum Group, and also St Peters and the City Parish. Just recently, today even, we saw the IVV building, formerly the World Trade Centre, which is also being put onto market and notes as part of its marketing and advertising, the fact that Victoria Street will be developed and the opportunity there for a potential investor or developer. The project in itself can be seen in two stages. The urban design project is the one that we've indicated we want to commence and complete by June of next year as part of the midterm CapEx review, and we want to create a much more attractive inner-city environment in what is currently, to be quite frank, an unattractive space. We want to look at improving cycling safety and the pedestrian experience, because currently we don't have a heck of a lot in terms of cycling safety, and pedestrians aren't prioritised because transport largely is. Bus prioritisation and additional cycling initiatives can follow in a stage two. The reason why we don't want to undertake all of the initiatives currently, well, one is a timing factor, we want to get the project completed by June of next year. There is nothing to preclude those initiatives taking place in the future, because the curb-to-curb will not change. And also, there is the question of greater consultation required, because both bus prioritisation and dedicated cycling lanes would require the removal of approximately eighty to a hundred car parking space within the city. And I think it's fair to say that that's a discussion that has to be held broadly rather than quickly. There's no reason why it can't take place if that's the will of the council, we want to make sure we do it properly. Engagement, we had a contribution from the public participant at the commencement of the meeting today, who rightly pointed out that there is a limited timeframe for consultation. In fact, it hasn't been a week though, it has been extended up until today. In fact, there's another meeting tomorrow with the Inner City Association, and we will continue to take feedback from interested stakeholders up until the project starts being built and until the very last point that it can be received. Officers have been extremely responsive to the requirements of those wanting to have a say, and I've found that in the meetings that I've attended, people have come away from them feeling satisfied that they've been listened to and that the project is going to be extremely beneficial to the city. Having said that, I encourage councillors to come along to the meetings that will be held in the future, including the one tomorrow with the Inner City Association. So on that basis, I'm happy to move the report. I'd like to encourage questions from councillors to officers, and I look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Young, would you like to speak?
So, just thinking about how we take this process-wise, if there are any questions, we'll have sort of really one per elected member would be seem reasonable, if you haven't had a chance.
You can sell your questions somewhere else. Councillor Free?
Thank you. Look, I have had the chance to talk with the urban design people and also with some of the transport planners too. At one point, I was speaking with one of our officers and saw that there had been some pencil lines on the plan to actually make the street width a little bit wider, which, you know, that particular officer hadn't yet had a chance to confirm whether that would happen or not with urban planning. I'm just wondering what the decision is likely to be on that.
Do you want to, well, you've probably been as involved with the design, maybe both of you pop up.
Your Worship, good afternoon. Yes, we're looking at that as an option, however, we're trying to assess the ramifications of it. At this stage, there are some significant challenges associated with it. One is associated with the air monitoring station that's been established in that area. But the bigger one is that we think the extra two metres of width will fundamentally compromise the urban design. So it hasn't been discounted, but we're just looking at the implications of it.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Trudy?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for sharing the designs. I'd like to speak now, and as I speak, I will introduce a noting amendment. I think we need to remember that this project did not spring suddenly created a month or so ago. It's actually been considered in the central city framework, as councillor Leicester said, and through the LTP in 2012. We actually looked at where we could make a big difference. I remember Ms Pennington talking about the opportunities in Victoria Street, and I think almost unanimously in the city, people want a softening of the city, they want it to be attractive places, to sit more trees. The question of allocation of road space is actually really difficult in general in the city. One might argue, and I don't want to be too retrospective, that if we'd lowered the speed limit, we would be having less questions about separate allocations of space. However, we did not, and we won't reopen that debate in total. But I do think it's important to see that we are not doing anything in this decision tonight to remove any chances of changing the road allocation in the future. There is a modest improvement proposed for the cycling just on these three blocks. It's not the full McCoy as we're able to do in Island Bay. In Island Bay, there is only one way out of the suburb, at the north of the suburb, the city and the network. Would the champion of the town belt wait till the town belt build and talk to me about the town belt? In this case, it's quite complex to now work through a network in the CBD, and whether that's, to what extent it's shared past, separated cycle lanes, paint or sharrows, has yet to be worked out, and in a way, we do not want to preempt that with engineering work. So, no, we haven't put it in, but it doesn't mean that we can't put it in the future. So I've got an amendment here that says, note that offices are working towards the draft CBD cycling network plan for consultation in mid-2015. So they're working through all that stuff about the road hierarchies, which are most ideal for walking and which are most ideal for cycling or bus, or should everything be on every street? That plan's going to identify the potential for further improvements to the CBD network for cycling. It will need to take account of the CBD bus rapid transit planning, and we don't even know what size and shape those vehicles might be yet. So, you know, there's quite a lot of iterative work to be done, and it will address the need to continue to improve pedestrian safety. And it does mention this is following the council's recent decision not to progress the regulatory thirty K speed limit. And I put in regulatory because, again, referring to that debate, it was, most people thought it should be kept reasonably calm and slow during the busy times of the day, but they were not in favour of doing it in a regulatory way. So I didn't want to just say the thirty K. And the reason that the staff haven't progressed that network fully beforehand is because they thought that the thirty K blanket would be a useful way of doing it. Now we, this is saying they're now looking at the proper network. So I just want to assure the people that are passionate about walking and cycling in the city that these bigger issues have not been forgotten, but doing three blocks of one street right now is not, in my view, the best investment in the transport of the city. So, do I have a second for my amendment? I think I have. Councillor Ritchie, do you wish to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? I don't know if I can ask this, but would the meeting like to accept the amendment? Right. Shall we go back to the paper as a whole? Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Free?
Is this a debate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I am very excited actually about the plans to do something with Victoria Street, and I think potentially this is going to be very, very positive for our city, and already we're seeing excitement in our development community, and that's well and good. But at the same time, Victoria Street, the minute I heard about it, I realised it was actually a proposal that had a lot of ramifications, and the needs, various competing needs have to be very finely balanced, because this is an important street. And when I asked initially at our Governance and Finance Committee meeting about cycling, I was kind of told that we're not going to have cycling up the street, instead of which they're actually going to go on the side streets. But when I asked the cycling community, without doubt, one hundred percent, I was told this is actually the way to go south, to go to Brooklyn, to go to the Iro Valley, to go to Mount Cook. There is actually no other practical way. This is the way that cyclists go, and at the moment, it's really dangerous. I've heard about someone who nearly went under a bus in Victoria Street. When they came to the pinch point, where you meet Vivian Street, there's a bus stop around there as well, it's actually quite dangerous at the moment, and I do think we need to be very cognisant of the fact that this is a main transport route that will need to accommodate our cyclists, who are growing in number, our bus rapid transit and our cars. And for that reason, I would argue that it's not just an urban design project, and to box it up like that, nor should it really be just driven by the need to provide development. It's actually something, it's a very important part of our city, it deserves a very serious amount of consideration. And we are doing the urban channel, we're actually digging up the street, we're going to be redoing the drainage. We won't be redoing that again. Eleven million dollars is a very significant amount of money, and we have made a commitment to be a cycle-friendly city and a pedestrian-friendly city. Therefore, I would be arguing very seriously that we do need to have a wide street to allow full ability to actually use that space in ways which will promote the best mix of transport options in the future. And I would really also argue that we need to be cognisant of the need to provide, for any development, to provide car parking for the public, because it might be that we all need to take car parking off that street. So, you know, I know that there are pressures on us to do this quickly, but at the same time, we cannot allow eleven million dollars and a very, very important street to be rushed where we don't actually make the optimum choices. So, you know, it's concerned to me that I haven't really seen a plan. I've only seen a plan because I've made the, you know, I wasn't able to actually open up, for your information, I wasn't actually able to open up the PDFs that were sent to us by email, and I'm sure it wasn't the only one. So for me, it's actually not satisfactory that we haven't had a plan put in front of us, a paper copy. You know, it's been provided to me, but I've made the effort to run around and get that. So it's a very exciting project. I take on board the points that were made by Mike Miller earlier this evening. I think they're all worthy of our actual further thought, and, you know, I just, while I'm excited, I just also really stress that we need to get this right, and I appreciate the work that's been done, but, you know, the parking, the width of the street, important.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wolf.
Your Worship, I would concur with my colleague councillor Free on many of the points that she's made. I'd like to also say that parts of the consultation and the engagement side have been a little poor, as was the initial comms, and that was a little bit disturbing. I was uncomfortable initially, I was uneasy with much of the design as well, and it was only when I started to ask the questions and gained answers from the officers that I regained some confidence and that this is good business for the city. In fact, I actually have total faith and confidence in our urban design team, and that's what majorly ticks and boxes for me. I believe that this is a great opportunity to create something special in an area of growth and progression in the city, and it's absolutely too good to turn down. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wolf. Councillor Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I concur with, sorry, I concur with my colleagues. Victoria Street is one of Wellington's truly significant streets, and I'm delighted at the proposed upgrade and the very snappy timeline, which I really applaud. As a resident of the CBD who walks down Victoria Street most days, and more importantly, as a councillor who represents the Lampton Board, I think this will be a huge improvement to the inner-city, the Victoria project, so I give it my full support. I'd also like to thank the designers for choosing the London Plain Tree, which is a tree which I particularly like, partly because it's deciduous, so you can see the seasons, which is something we don't see with New Zealand trees, and also because it's so tough, it can withstand the conditions that it will have in Victoria Street. I'm very pleased that there will still be provision for proper cycling lanes eventually. I do think this is something we need in the CBD. But I also wonder whether it would be a good opportunity to install a bike barometer. I've got photographs of them, if anyone wants to see them. They are used in places like Portland and Boulder and Copenhagen, so you can see the daily tally of cyclists and then the annual tally. I don't think we'll get to Copenhagen's figures, where the street I saw was two and a half million this year, but I think it will be very interesting to have that kind of data so we can see, because this is a major street for cyclists, and I think it can only become more so. So, anyway, full support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Platanas Orientalis from the East. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very, this is a very exciting project, but I think we'll also need to think about the actual cross-links. The, it is a significant expenditure, eleven million dollars. We can look at it from, in terms of Victoria and a Cuba Street precinct. This is what this project is all about. And yes, we can look at it in terms of the north-south connections, which is basically providing commuter linkages for various modes for north-south type connections. But I think it's also equally important to look at the east-west connections, which which are the connections between the Victoria Street and through into the Cuba Street precinct. So I think this is a, yes, it is a very exciting project, but I think we should actually look at it in, in a broader urban design sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Eagle.
Thank you, your worship. Just a few comments briefly around the engagement side of some of these projects. What's increasingly becoming obvious to me and the gentleman who came in this evening had certainly documented his thoughts, but we have the engagement policy in place. It took over two years to develop, but I feel we're, we're, we're coming, constantly we're getting stuck around this area. And so I guess my reflection on saying, we've got eleven million dollars, we want to get this through, we're, we're passionate about it, it's the right thing to do, but we do need to be mindful of the fact that we need to do something in this space and, I mean, I say this because I led the portfolio in the previous triennium, but when you've got the same stakeholders on one project going, no, no, we've got to go, go and get this done, and then on this project they are saying, no, no, stop, stop, we need more consultation, then obviously we have a bit of a problem. And so I'm, I'm, I'm wondering whether there, there needs to be some work done on, on this and maybe gets addressed in the writer reply. And I'm thinking around to be positive about, around that confidence and reassurance to say, if this is going to be the blocker at the intersection every time, then hey, let's look at it and say, we've got something wrong here. I mean, the goals are here, we've got a public commitment and the best practice IAP2 spectrum is also in place. And so I don't think it's broke, but what I'm seeing is every time we hit the road with it, we're coming to, to a standstill around the process in terms of our policy. So it's just a comment and colleagues, we don't want to be in this situation every time.
Thank you, councillor Eagle. Councillor Peck, followed by councillor Coghlan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I've, I've, I've enjoyed the debate, I've got to say, it's, some interesting points have been raised, but I, perhaps councillor Lester in his write of reply might also want to confirm that there's actually considerably a lot more water to go under the bridge before this is done and dusted. If you look at the report, the report tells us it's to inform councillors of the design, is to discuss the traffic implications, is to discuss the funding and delivery arrangements and discuss feedback from consultation. And the only recommendation the council has to sign off on tonight is to receive the information. I understand that, taking on board comments made by councillor Eagle, that there's some consultation tomorrow night at a meeting, which a number of us will be attending. And despite the fact that this is a matter which needs timely decisions, in no, in no way have we reached the end of engaging and listening. And in fact, if anything, there's a lot more listening to be done before we finally make final decisions. So I don't have the same deep-seated concerns that some have. I, I do think the proposal, it's certainly one that I will be, be supporting unless there's some fairly strong evidence to say otherwise, because this whole area of town needs some rejuvenation. From Bond Street through to Cuba Street, along that stretch of road and through Victoria Street, is, is, is pretty depressed at the moment, a lot of empty shops and the foot traffic in those areas is, is very low. And so the council just can't ignore that. This is something that council needs to take seriously. I look forward to engaging with the people that will be at the meeting tomorrow night and seeing what comes out of that consultation process.
Thank you very much, councillor Peck. Councillor Coghlan.
Thank you. Yep, and I agree with a lot of those comments actually and the comments of the other councillors this evening. I think when we're talking about the eleven million investment, we need to remind people about actually what the economic benefit and the return is going to be from that investment and actually it's going to be pretty huge and particularly when you consider we're trying to prepare this whole Tiara area for potentially nine and a half thousand people, you know, two thousand people in Victoria Street and an additional thousand full-time students coming into the new creative hub with Wautik and Fitteraya building that, I mean, there's your foot traffic. So, you know, what is that worth? That's worth heaps. So I think we need to remember in our comms to continually remind people of, of what the, you know, return on investment is in terms of the spend. In terms of the, the roading and the carriageway, look, you know, I don't really mind as long as I can still drive to work. So, you know, bring on the cycleways and everything else, but there's a lot of us that go down there every single day in our little cars and it's very good. So whether the traffic has to be slightly shifted or whatever, it doesn't worry me as long as I still have a choice to drive. So, and I think it's great that we're able to use the Memorial Park Alliance really to deliver this project within a reasonable timeframe. I mean, it's all there, it's ready to go and, you know, we can leverage off that, those skills and expertise and that's fantastic. So I think it's great, but I think let's just keep reminding people about actually what it means in terms of the bigger investment for the city and how it's going to help us to grow and be more vibrant ultimately.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lester, write a reply.
Thank you councillors for your input and for your largely very positive comments. I take on board the feedback around the consultation, the engagement and which has been discussed at length. Councillor Peck, you mentioned in terms of the, the process from here and how it will follow. This is essentially an information report. At the meeting of the 10th of September, Governance, Finance and Planning, we discussed the project and a series of projects and midterm capex review at length. Where we go to now, this will enable us to confirm the concept design within the coming days and that will take on board the feedback from the parties that we've been talking to, including at the meeting tomorrow night. It'll allow for a longer period of detailed design and analysis where we can input into that design, the feedback we've had largely around principles or whether seeing potential design flaws or how we can improve it. We've seen that, we've had lots of consultation and discussion around the cycling lanes, for example, and we want to incorporate as much of that as we can. We did agree unanimously as a council that we do want to proceed with the project, so that hasn't changed and that's what I'm hearing tonight as well. Between now and the project being defined in greater detail and then being built and before it's completed, hopefully by June next year, there will be lots more opportunity for discussion and officers have been great in that respect as well, taking that feedback on board. Thank you for your positive comments. No, I'm brown.
Thank you very much, councillor Lester. We will now vote on the notes. I'm not quite certain you meant to vote no. That's all right, you can't change, we, we can take the, so you're saying you voted the wrong way? She voted the wrong way, so, so actually unanimous, let's move on. So. It will be recorded accurately in the minutes. So I now call on councillor Lester, remembering this is as Chair of GFP to be, to introduce the expenditure item next, including Christmas. No, I beg your pardon, I've jumped ahead to my next page, no wonder you were looking confused. Right, so we are now, the, the first item from GFP here is the capital expenditure review, which is the first time we've done this. So councillor Lester, over to you.
Brown, I had hoped to move all three at the same time, if you'll allow.
Yep. As councillor Alvin Mersfield.
Yes. It would make good sense. I won't speak at length to this, except acknowledge the widespread approval that we have received with regards to the midterm capex review, notwithstanding the comments made around the Victoria Street project, generally the principle around undertaking a review, which was novel in many respects, but I think has been viewed very positively. I'd like to commend the chief executive for all the steps being taken, members of ELT and staff that have contributed to the work. But it's great to see, we've got that circuit breaker around what was an unsustainable, constant and consistent carrying forward of a capex programme that wasn't being completed. This will enable us to undertake tangible projects in a meaningful timeframe and to see some action on the ground. I wholeheartedly endorse that. Now, one slight comment, considering the fifteen-odd million dollars that we are investing, it was, I received with some enjoyment, the feedback largely around Christmas. That was the only thing that people were largely concerned with. I just want to highlight that point and note that this after Christmas is very important. The council has promised we will deliver on a good Christmas this year and no doubt that will take place. Thank you. And councillor Coghlan will second as she'll speak in more detail to the other reports as well.
Call on councillor Coghlan.
Yes, well, obviously, as the Chair of Economic Arts, Economic Growth and Arts, very pleased to see the additional, well, the unspent proportion basically of the weed fund being rolled into this next year, so that's great and those funds will continue to be available. So we are approving the allocation of the unspent 2013-14 balance of 1.375 million. And of course, yes, very pleased about the events fund, we've got Christmas celebrations, we've got New Year's Eve celebrations, we've got the capital 150th celebrations, the 2015 Cricket World Cup and Anzac Day commemoration, so that's about 1.6 million, which will be going on, exciting events for us all to enjoy. And I'm particularly pleased about the telecom Christmas tree, which was an early idea, we are going with it, are we not? And hopefully we are, or are we not? Oh, spark, it was telecom back in those days. Are we not? Oh my God, okay, right, let's just scrap that. Okay, so anyway, yes, good job and look forward to your support.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly speak to these three items and say what an awesome investment we're making in public assets. If cheering up the streets of our city isn't our core business, I don't know what is. So we've talked about Victoria Street, but also the important linkages. Mason's Lane has been a thorn in our side for some time, it's going to improve hugely. Anyone that sat in the wrong seats at WOW will thoroughly approve of the TSB Shed Six seating and won't it be marvellous to see the attic refurbished at the Museum of Wellington City and Sea? I've had it confirmed that there's a number of supporters of the Museum of Wellington City and Sea whose funding will be joining ours, including central government funding if we agree this tonight. The cable car, the wonderful temporary lighting during Power Plant, it's excellent to see with that investment by Contact Energy that we have now taken that to a permanent position. And the zoo, I was out there and some of you were also, now I won't do the puns about councillors' names, but it was wonderful to be at the Savannah Cats Grasslands opening yesterday and say that I was very confident that this council fully supports the development of that important part of the zoo. The street banners will make it a lot cheaper to keep changing the excitement of what's going on in the city. It used to be a very extensive process, so I look forward to that. And then we're going to not just have the infrastructure, but we're going to be able to have the events and the decorations too. We are the first capital in the world to see 2015. We want to be on the TV, we don't want them skipping straight to Sydney. And what a 2015 it's going to be. Cricket World Cup, Anzac, Gallipoli, Hundredth Commemorations, but also our capital birthday. And if you can see all the words that's going down at the cenotaph at the moment, we are well-prepared for celebrating the nationhood that resides here in the capital. So I strongly support these and urge you all to support all of the items here. Would anyone else like to debate, comment? Right. Do you feel a need for a write a reply? Please vote. And that's passed unanimously. I'd now like to move to councillor Ritchie with councillor, councillor Pannett is the Chair of the Environment Committee, but she's kindly allowed councillor Ritchie, who's the Environment Portfolio Leader, to move this report that she's had so much involvement with.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors. Before I talk about the substance of the issue, I really do want to thank a significant number of, of people. I have to thank Mike Oates for his persistence, patience, collaboration, expertise and so on. I also want to thank Adam Holloway for his legal advice and patience. Michael Morris, whom I haven't met, I don't thank, Mike Morris from Excess Consultants, helped us with the very challenging titles and some surveying and so on. There are many others to thank. I would like to thank councillor Pannett, who has stayed the distance for most of the time, I mean, until the last lap. Actually, I said that incorrectly. What I meant was, she didn't, she didn't come out in the starting blocks. She didn't come out in the starting blocks and she's, yeah, nearly stayed the distance. I have to thank Joan and the friends, I want to thank them, of the town belt and John Bishop. Joan has significant expertise, has been involved for 15 years in endeavouring to ensure that there is going to be legislation to protect and enhance the town belt. We've had the civic trust, councillors have been involved and the public significantly. Mike Oates has just supplied me, and I'm, am going to read it, some thoughts about the process, because I think you may be interested. Over the course of the four-year project, we received 467 written submissions and heard 111 oral submissions in support of them. The engagement of individuals and organisations through every part of the process was through every part of the process, many submitted at each stage. The close involvement has enabled a very collaborative approach and has produced better outcomes, there's absolutely no doubt about that. The close involvement of councillors throughout the process, we had the town belt a subcommittee, which was quite a contentious and innovative way to approach political matters, and also the patience of Grant Robinson, who will introduce this legislation into the House and who actually has been involved with the process since 2001, when he endeavoured to introduce or to develop a piece of legislation at that time. We all know that this legislation has to stand the test of time for the next hundred years. For me personally, this has been one of the most rewarding roles that I've undertaken in, in my entire time on council and I have ensured or endeavoured to ensure that I meticulously guarded the town belt for the people of Wellington. Sometimes that was argumentatively. I don't know how long I've got to speak, but I want to speak forever.
Can we have a five minutes of introduction, something like? Yeah, just carry on, that's fine.
Okay. And, and to guide the process over the last four years. Today, Mayor and councillors, we do make history here. Today, we will agree to forward the Wellington Town Belt Bill to be introduced into Parliament. Today, we also celebrate who we are and what we value most, such that we have drawn up legislation to protect and enhance and manage the town belt for future generations. Today, we take on a responsibility, a big responsibility for future generations, to do just that. What is the town belt? The town belt is that green belt that we all know about, that clothes our city, which fosters growth, health, public recreation, our natural heritage and is unique in the coolest little capital in the world. Today, we announce through this bill as trustees and councillors that we will protect and add... that we will protect and add land to the town belt. We will claw back what has been taken over many years by the government. Today, you proudly will enable the public, the inhabitants, as they are in the bill, to have much more say over the town belt in its governance and more control over the trustees and councillors in a number of ways. And to protect their freedom of access. We also will ensure through this bill that there is a transparent statutory protection in one focus, specific piece of law. We will not allow, we will allow no sale or trade of this land for speculation. We will ensure that any major building over the next hundred years will have public consultation. We will ensure that the inhabitants have standing in the courts. We will limit the leasing of land to no more than 20 years and no more than eight hectares where it was 40. We will not permit rampant commercialism. We will enhance the natural environment. We will add land. In 1995, or actually in 1841, there were 624 hectares put aside for the town belt. By 1995, that had reduced to 424. And today, in the bill, there will be 520 hectares put aside for town belt in the legislation. There are a number of additions which I won't add. Finally, we will replace the 1873 deed, but attach it. Why? Because it is a one-sentence, two-page document in archaic language, lacking clarity, not serving the town belt well, and actually also allows the leasing of all or any part of the town belt lands, if you can read that within it. I finish. In the words of the QC, who provided us with an opinion, "The proposed legislation better expresses in a complete way the basis upon which the town belt is to be made available and managed better, defines council's powers, provides for an improved transparency in its decision-making." I invite you each and all to make this historic action and vote. We will urge Parliament to pass the bill in its entirety without alteration so that it becomes an act to protect, manage, enhance the town belt for the next hundred years. You can be proud. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. I would like to second this. And first of all, I echo councillor Ritchie's thanks. And I'd like to add my thanks to councillor Ritchie. She has been assiduous in the work that she's done to make sure that people are involved, is fully informed of the issues, and has endeavoured to make sure that everybody else is. The town belt has certainly provided an awesome asset to Wellington in a number of ways. The physical recreation, the contribution to mental health, the support for increasingly different wildlife, but also its contribution to our compact urban form. Imagine how different our city would be if there were houses, however charming, and streets and so on, all the way over the hill to Her Tai Tai, all the way over the hill from Newtown to Island Bay instead of a golf course and other recreational aspects. So it's done a great job despite being nibbled away at and in some cases, large chunks taken. But it's also, times have changed in other ways. The breadth of forms of recreation that are now enjoyed are wider. And in fact, the term biodiversity was not even coined in those days. I did a little etymological search. And biological diversity was used in possibly the 1960s the first time, certainly in common use in the 1980s. But the contraction biodiversity that we use so freely now was probably not used until 1985. So there are some aspects that the town belt provides that need to be described, acknowledged, protected, that were not there in that original rather long-winded, I don't know, it's two sentences, which is absolutely extraordinary. So I, this is in my letter to MPs congratulating them on their election. Support for the Wellington Town Belt Bill is one of the things that I will be mentioning to all of them. Because this is something that over the next hundred years, parties will come, parties will go. The pendulum will swing left to right. I won't use any of the different colours because that could be pejorative. But it will change, but the town belt will still be there and I hope it will be even better than it is now. So moving to other people wishing to speak, councillor Pannett.
Well, it is a privilege to vote on this bill today. I think we're very lucky and it's a good day to be a Wellingtonian as well because we're going to protect this land for future generations. My very warm thanks to all of those people in Wellington who have protected this land and have fought very hard for it. Mike and Adam have been absolutely amazing to work with. And I'd also like to publicly acknowledge Grant Robertson, who has stayed the distance. Councillor Ritchie, one of your legacies. I think this is very kind of me to say this in spite of you insinuating I hadn't done my job. I did, I certainly, yeah, it's been, it's been good to work with you. So I think one of the things that's really important to acknowledge is that we have listened extensively to all of the circumstances. There have been so many changes made to this bill. In fact, you wouldn't be able to really see that from just reading the paper tonight. Over and over and over again, we have worked through the process to make more and more changes to protect the land. In fact, we have deliberately tried to even tie the hands of future councils to avoid the risk of them giving the land away. And so I'm very proud to support it. I acknowledge, however, the concerns of those who feel that we have delegated too much power to officers. However, I think there are enough safeguards in this bill to ensure that that doesn't happen. And to this end, I am going to move to amendments tonight. It does have the support of officers and the people who know most about this bill. I'm sorry for not circulating earlier. I was in a certain degree of pain over the weekend. So I've just managed to pull it together. So, and we didn't move this at the Environment Committee because we didn't want to move anything on the hoof. It has been worked through by officers. So essentially, what we're going to do is change one of the delegations. We're going to, instead of allowing a committee to have the power to grant leases, it will have to be done by the full council. And that is essentially for two reasons. One is that because it's such an impressive, an important bit of land, an impressive piece of land, it is important that the full council has a say rather than just possibly eight of us, depending on the committee's structure. And it means that everyone gets to have a say. And of course, you know, we often all vote on, you know, land relating to the waterfront. So I think that's absolutely appropriate. Leases can be highly contentious, so that does provide a level of protection to those who are concerned about delegating too much power down. Now, that does not mean that you would have the authority to grant licences for a coffee cart. That will be done down at a lower level and that is appropriate. I've also put in something around consultation. Now, this essentially means that where we're talking about building or extending a building, we're imposing charges, granting a lease, adding land, that there will have to be an oral submission process. But again, that does not extend to things like granting licences. At that point, you would just need to take into account the views of the public and make sure all information was properly heard. But I think it is important that we grant the public that right to have that say because those things that I first mentioned, buildings, adding land, are potentially contentious of great public interest. And so really, it's just providing another layer of protection. And there was some concern around raising amendments tonight, but I actually fully defend doing that because this is our last chance tonight. In about a few minutes, when we lose control over this bill, it will be going through to Parliament and the MPs will be able to have their say on it. Hopefully, they will accept our judgement. But I think it's important that we get this right. And we have sweated particularly councillor Ritchie and I and the officers to get it right. But I just think these two small additions will just make it that much stronger. Thank you.
Councillor, do you have a second, eh? Thank you, councillor Free. After the second is spoken, we'll just get confirmation from the staff and then we'll go into debate or accept, depending on where we get to.
I don't have a huge amount to add. Thank you. Again, thanks to councillor Ritchie and councillor Pannett, who really have taken this to heart and done, along with their officers, a really sterling job. I do think that there's been just a little bit of unease raised about some of the matters which these amendments seek to address. And we want to be completely transparent in what we're planning to do. And I think that the extra measures that we've outlined here around consultation and the protection of having a full council make decisions on leases will serve to show that we are aiming for the highest level of transparency and accountability. So I'm very happy to support and second these amendments.
Given the director of this area isn't here, I'll ask the chief executive to comment on officers' views on this.
Yeah, I'm advised that officers are happy with this amendment.
Thank you, councillors. So is there any objection to us accepting this? It's changing two powers of delegation. So we'll accept the amendment and we'll move on to debating the whole thing. Thank you. No, they're happy to accept it. Thank you. So we'll, we'll vote on it. If anyone wants it taken separately, they can, but we'll vote on it when we come to the end. But people can debate the whole thing, including the accepted amendment now, if they wish to. They don't appear to wish to. So councillor Ritchie, I'm not, you're very welcome to have a writer reply, but I'm not sure it would appear that you need it. So we're now going to vote on all of the recommendations about the Town Belt Bill. Checking that you might conceivably have pressed the wrong button. So can you just ask the staff to? Yeah, that's right. I'd hate to say it for you. So that has been passed unanimously. And we will now move councillor, councillors. Now, he voted for it, he just, it happens sometimes. Councillor Leicester, if I can call on you for the Transport and Urban Development Committee meeting, vesting legal road in the Crown.
I move.
Seconded is councillor Marsh, do you wish to speak? Anyone else who should speak? I'll hold the vote in a moment. Please, councillor, on your vote, that's right. Thank you. It's against me on this show. He doesn't want to listen. He's not so used to it, but I'm unanimous. So how we vote, as councillor, I'm pretty immersive. I think we should, I mean, he's gone now, so taking his vote by hand, we can't really do, unfortunately. No, I don't think we can. Well, he didn't leave before he pressed back, but I think he's spoken. He was in favour. Oh, my God.
All night, they've been voting for each other.
How's that?
It's terrible. Let's just hang up. I'm sorry. We had one vote against, which was councillor Pannett, and the rest were in favour. And if everyone's happy with that, okay. Thank you very much. I declare the meeting closed.
[Music]